You start R.
You rely.
See? All right. Nine o'clock, I call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Wrong.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Um, bow your very prayer. Dear Lord Father, as we gather here today, dear Lord, we bow down to you and give you humble and praise and thanks for the much-needed rain, dear Lord, that it has soaked up our parched earth, dear Lord. I ask you to continue to be with those men and women out there fighting these wildfires in Oklahoma, dear Lord, and to each one of our men and women that are out there fighting them, as well as the people that live there, that, that, please take them into your care and giving. Give them back as they need your help and they need your understanding and they, they need everything from us, dear Lord, as we, we lift them up to you. I ask that you be with everybody that serves Oklahoma, whether at the county level, state level, or local level, dear Lord, and our federal administrators, our president, and all of our leaders, dear Lord, that again, we work together for the best of this nation because we are one God, one nation under God, dear Lord, and that's why we're here, to serve you and to, to do this. We ask that we humbly dedicate our work to you and that it's pleasing in all that we say and do. I say so in thy precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Patrick, can you lead us in the salute, please?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the open meeting act.
Consider an act on approval of the minutes from April sixteenth, twenty eighteen. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I move to approve.
Second.
Wrong moves, yes seconded, to approve the minutes of April sixteenth, twenty eighteen, regular minutes presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Comments from the public on the, any of the below agenda items?
His floor is.
You what?
I mean, I don't know if I even wind up on the agenda I missed last week because I was out west and I'm just here to satisfy your questions.
You are.
Thank you very much. Do we have any transfer of appropriations? Purchase orders and travel claims and motions to review.
I make a motion to review.
Second.
Yes moves, wrong at seconds, to review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
Somebody got a nice, new, pretty loader.
Yes.
Can I borrow?
It's a very nice loader.
We, can I borrow that? We'll have it back to you years.
Year two?
Yeah.
That looking all right?
Yep.
And then once I get it, I'll sign, I'll scan it to you.
Got your time scheduled for.
Oh, thank you.
Cindy, we might ought to take, um, Kirby Smith that's got a kitchen Preston Brown.
We take that off?
Yeah. Preston had passed away.
Okay.
Beyond re.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Culture. Yeah. That'll do. Okay. What's his name? Pat? We could put on there?
Wrong here.
Yes.
That's bad cap.
That would be Mike Wolf or Chuck Ridley.
Yeah.
Mike Wolf is the one that usually.
Yeah.
Is it Aviella? Yes. Hey, Dan, are you telling me?
John Fodden.
Hey Chuck. Good morning. Election boards.
No. Did she bring it?
But.
I have all but that one.
Yes, but what happened was Robin Harrod signed hers, the other Robin, so. Make sure that Robin writes. Yeah, she will bring it to us. Okay, good. That's right. All right, cue. You awake?
No, I've got to eat. Still never got a sip of this.
Drinking coffee since four and I'm still not awake.
Material, but it still didn't bother me. We can go off to bed anyway. I wouldn't wait on that anymore.
I mean, I got with Donnie.
Yeah.
Get some coffee, Chuck.
Yeah, but I'll get it later.
You want some?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
We made two pots this morning.
Got something we ordered.
Oh, we didn't.
Over in Clark's office. Max, do you want some coffee?
Yes, I would.
I'll do my stuff.
I'll have Alex bring some, or when she comes to get the POs.
Okay.
Call her and tell her they're signed.
Okay.
I move to approve purchase orders and travel claims.
Second that motion.
Hi, if you'll come get the PO, if you'll bring Max coffee and come get the POs. Or have someone.
Okay.
All right, thank you, bye. Wrong move, yes seconded, to approve payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Blanket purchase orders, we need approval.
I make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Yes move, wrong seconded, to approve blanket purchase orders as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Plan of proposed bridge replacement, bridge circle number two seventy and two seventy-one A by D three. Do we need to just acknowledge the plan?
He has signatures.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. I move to approve the plan of proposed bridge replacement.
I'll second that plan.
Wrong move, has seconded to approve the plan of proposed bridge replacement, bridge circle number two seventy, two seventy-one A as prepared by.
C E.
Oh, no, it's by.
M K E C.
Engineer through the C E D eight, engineer. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. We usually have a big, this is, these are, we usually have a big.
Plan?
You know, uh.
Well, he just emailed them too.
Yeah, he just emailed. These are just copies.
We probably need to, uh, do a couple of them.
Oh, okay. Do you want a copy? I mean, I made copies. I didn't know.
I mean, we probably ought to make a couple of originals in the days.
Okay, okay.
I don't know who will, I might have to send, probably, because I think those have to go back to the state, probably back to Don.
Thank you.
Then hurt if I got them.
You go and let's decide.
Sign all of them.
Can I give you these others?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, your name's on there, so.
Yeah.
That means she's going to be the supervisor out there.
Yeah.
There you go. I saw that in the email, Cindy, so you, you always.
Okay, item E, notice to bidder number five, twenty eighteen, purchase one or more twenty eighteen or newer water tanker for the Deer Creek Fire Department, and Mr. Chuck is here to, do you have anything that you need to let us know about this?
There's no real change on it. Max contacted me while I was out west and I think I clarified all the issues and questions that he had. Just, it was intentionally written as vague and open as I could write it to give the builders an opportunity to bring forth whatever they think the best situation is. And being I couldn't be here last week, I'll just hear because of the questions were brought up in case you had more.
Right. Well, the deal too was, is on the pumps, where you had the two pumps.
Mm-hmm.
That was a question. We didn't know whether you just wanted one pump that could fit, and you clarified that.
And we wanted to clarify the radios to make sure.
Yeah. You want three different radios.
Three different radios that work within those areas.
And Cindy rewrote that just a little bit.
And I forwarded it to that again.
Excellent. I've reviewed it at home. The purpose on the three radios is, you know, eighty percent of the time we're on G C S A or Grant County business, but when we go up into Kansas. Oh, yeah. It's not even the same frequency range. Sure. And then, so we can turn on a radio and be able to run both sides and do the same thing over in K K. Makes sense.
Makes sense, yeah, absolutely.
I would make a motion to go out for bids for the purchase of one or more two thousand eighteen newer tanker for Deer Creek Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Yes move, wrong seconded, to, to approve the notice to bidder oh five, twenty eighteen, to purchase one or more twenty eighteen or newer water tanker for the Deer Creek Fire Department, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. We usually bid one or more because of the another fire.
Department.
Department says that's a good deal, we'd like to piggyback, we don't have to rebid it.
Okay, fantastic with me. I'll be probably bringing you some more business over the next six months.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you very, very much for dealing with this.
I'll get it in the newspaper, so you'll.
All right.
I was kind of surprised to see on the news that that thing was only twenty-nine percent con, uh, controlled too.
The information I got yesterday was sixty, like, four.
Yeah.
Well, that was Saturday that I heard.
It was Saturday.
So.
Well, I guess they send us back. We'll go back.
Yep. Thanks, Chuck.
Have a great day.
You too.
I promise.
Yeah.
I, I move to approve, uh, bid number six dash two thousand eighteen, materials for bridges, uh, two seventy, two seventy-one A for District Three.
Second that motion.
Wrong move, has seconded to approve the notice to bidder of oh six, twenty eighteen, materials for bridge circle number two seventy and two seventy-one A for D three, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Item G, oh seven, twenty eighteen, labor for bridges twenty, two seventy and two seventy-one A for D three.
I make a motion to go out, uh, for bids for oh seven dash twenty eighteen, labor on the bridges twenty, two seventy and two seventy-one A for District Three.
Second.
Yes move, wrong seconded, to approve the notice to bidder oh seven, twenty eighteen, labor for bridges two seventy and two seventy-one A for District Three, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Notice bid oh eight, twenty eighteen, lease purchase of one or more twenty eighteen or newer oil distributor trucks, including financial, financing options for D one and D two.
Move to go out for bid for lease purchase of, on number eight dash two thousand eighteen for the old distributor truck for Districts one and three.
I'll second that motion.
Wrong move, has seconded to approve the notice to finance lease purchase of, of late twenty eighteen, lease purchase of one or more twenty eighteen or newer oil distributor trucks, including financing for D one, D two, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Cancellation of N J P A bid for Thompson dry pump for diesel pump motor. This was that one, and they notified me that it was going to be twelve to fourteen weeks before they even start, they're going to have to build it and it's going to be twelve to fourteen weeks, and I needed pump now one down, so we found another one off of the buy board that'll be about six weeks, so I would like to cancel this, this one, and I just, it's just paper trail, so I'd move to cancel that.
I'll second that.
So Bobbit moved, wrong seconded, to approve the cancellation of N J P A bid for Thompson dry pump, four-inch diesel pump, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
I make a motion to go out for bids for a twenty eighteen Goodwood C D one hundred N model with zero hours, unit N S I, N I S, for District Two.
Uh, to buy it off the National Buy Board?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yes move, wrong seconded, to approve the National Buy Board bid for twenty eighteen Goodwood, uh, dry pump unit, as mentioned, off the state approved process to Kirby Smith, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
We need to make a comment.
Yes.
I did call and speak to the representative from the buy board and, and just, he did say they will need copies of the PO.
Okay.
To be sent to, and I thought I'd note that in the minutes.
Yes, please note that.
And, uh, so, once that's done, I don't mind sending it, but he gave me where we need to be sending.
Oh, awesome.
Once the PO is.
Okay. And do we, and I, I need to clarify, do we make the PO to buy board? Or do we make it to Kirby Smith?
I spoke with Travis Mace from Buy Board. Grant County has a whole, as a whole is approved. Therefore, therefore the contract info should be either, uh, Clerks or at Desi, and so he sent me, let's see, here's our current info, it follows, here's the actual contract, um, but he didn't clarify it. I'll find that out and then I'll let y'all know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah. Who we made it out to? The PO made it, has it made out to Kirby Smith or has it made out to Buy Board?
Okay.
Like your trailer, it was to Kirby Smith, right?
Right.
And I, I think it is, but I want to make sure we're on the same page on that.
All right.
What's their website? Are they a website kind of like J D A?
They do. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't even aware of that. I just, you know, I forgot. I, I kind of remember that a long time ago, joining that, I kind of forgot about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, proclamation, uh, proclamation for the Oklahoma Home and Community Education Week, that used to be our extension homemakers, but their name is the Oklahoma Home and Community Education Week, so.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation.
I will second.
Yes move, wrong seconded, to approve the proclamation for Oklahoma Home and Community Education Week, May sixth through May twelfth, twenty eighteen, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Let's see, and then you get this back to them and then they create it if they want to.
Yes. She said she would probably publish it next week.
Designation of requisitioning office for the Grant County Free Fair, Lacy Rhon, with Fairport Treasure.
Actually, L through O, or I'm waiting on Phil's signature and I was unable to, I emailed him last week, Phil.
Okay, so L, M, N, O. We need no action, waiting on signatures. Okay. Item P, part-time employee for Grand County Expo Center Detail and Disposal A D A, Stephen O, from Fairport.
Okay. Yeah, buzz him on, he's here, not so to be able to reply.
I don't know what they've done down there. I, I know that we got all of the kitchen equipment put in. That was done the day of our meeting last Wednesday, and then, um, we did not have any equipment in there as far as like office equipment or anything in the, in the main office Wednesday. We just set up tables to meet up, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure. There's been so much going on down there.
Sure.
Pat, did you see prom down there? Was it nice?
Kids got the rug on that floor there.
So they were having it, but it looked nice when they had it all decked right? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good. I'm so happy. That's great.
Let's, let's move on. I'm sorry, Beth.
No, that's okay. I'm, I'm not waiting. My husband's out working on equipment, so he's, he's not waiting on me.
Have you come up with some ideas of your hours and stuff like that?
We did have a few items, so I, to try to answer the questions that you had, so.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no problem at all. I'm not in any hurry.
Full time in just a little bit again.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Service agreement for the, let's see, uh, Grant County Expo Center Fulton unit.
And I, okay, I had talked to Stephen about that too, and he, he said this is, okay, they.
Best for the water soft.
Yeah. And the only issue is that they had done it prior to doing the contract, it's going to be a monthly service, um, so I guess that needs to be knowledge or whatever, um, you know, it's like.
Is he, what did, was he good with this?
Yeah, I mean, he's like, well, there's nothing you can do about it now. He's like, it's already done. He said a lot of times it happens, and then they get out there and you're like, oh, we got to sign a.
Contract.
Contract, but anyway, so.
So did he sign off on that?
No, he, I mean, he was going to talk to us about all this kind of stuff, so.
Well, let's, let's pass over that for right now, okay? How about item R, Crossland Construction? We can't do that one because he's supposed to talk to us about that. Um, and Holly Fire Department, is he supposed to talk to us about that one? Okay. Item T, monthly officers report for March twenty eighteen, Assessor Election Board, Health Department, Sheriff and Treasurer, do we have those? Do you need one subject to audit? Let's review them first. Desi. Did you guys need any? The axe just came. Hello, um, we were trying to locate Stephen, and I called even up him, he didn't answer. Is it possible for you to kind of maybe go check and see where these axes, he was supposed to be available this morning? Can you go up and check with our team? Okay, thank you.
Cindy. Since the requisitioning, all that, those agents haven't changed yet, does Alex have anything that the firm would need to address in there right now?
I don't know. I, I don't.
While they're reviewing stuff, I may run over there and just check it. Okay.
Thank you.
There we go. Election.
Yeah, that's right.
Assessor, Action, Health Department.
Health Department, yeah.
Okay, maybe, yeah.
The Treasurer.
Yeah, the Sheriff.
The one I've seen.
And then the Sheriff's.
Where's the Sheriff's there?
Yeah, I saw him.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, I'll go.
I move to approve the monthly officer report submitted to audit for March two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Okay. Wrong move, has seconded to approve the monthly officers report submitted to audit for March twenty eighteen, the Assessor, Election Board, Health Department, Sheriff and Treasurer, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
Hello.
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I make a motion to approve the monthly.
Acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
I say.
Yes move, wrong seconded, to acknowledge the monthly job report from the Sheriff's Office for March twenty eighteen, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. We will return to item P on our agenda, the part-time employee for Grand County Expo Center, Free Fair. Okay.
Um, yeah. Um, I, I had an opportunity to speak with, um, Shirley Merle, um, with the Auditor's Office, and. And we discussed that along with the contracts. Where they want to be able to have one person down there to do the contracts. So that they can expedite the contracts and they duck contracts, don't, for that, don't have to run through the board meetings of both the Fair Board and here. And I think the easiest way to do that is to do an interlocal agreement. And.
Between us and the Fair Board?
Yes.
Okay.
And where you agree to provide a person at, you know, whatever fee arrangements you, you agree to have that person at and, you know, in that interlocal agreement will put down what duties that person is to provide the Fair Board. That person will need to be an employee of the county and whose district is, I guess they'll be stationed there in the, the, the fair building.
It's District Three road district.
So, so that's.
Max.
So, that's you. Okay, so she'll need to be, or he will need to be your employee. He'll be on your payroll, okay? And so.
Now, wait a minute, it can't come out of highway. It'll have to come out of the Fair Board deal because we can't legally hire someone out of highway.
It'll have to, it'll have to come out of County General.
Okay.
It'll have to come out of County General.
Transfer.
And then, and then the Fair Board, because first you pay the employee and then you'll send the Fair Board a bill the following month. This is how much.
For all the, the Suda Fuda, FICA, whatever.
Yeah, this is, this is based upon whatever negotiations you did. And, and they'll, they'll reimburse you back and then the money will go back into County General.
Okay, my question then for this, if this is gonna be a District Three employee, can I hire somebody full-time and then just the amount of hours that they put in a week over there, we just bill them for that?
Whatever you want, whatever you want to do. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It's gonna be, you're gonna have to have a lot of documentation. You'll have to have two time cards. That says when you're on the Fair Board and when you're on.
Well, we don't have a time clock, but yeah, we can, we can.
You can set up a time sheet.
Yeah, we can just set up a time sheet. That's easy.
Like, for what we have, when, when we have someone split funded like that, we, you know, we have two columns in there. But both of those, both the times added up would, would be overtime. And so you'll have to have some sort of agreement with the Fair Board as to overtime and, and that kind of stuff.
And, and benefit, I mean, I think, I think to keep it clear, I think you need to say X hours every month so you can divide benefits. Because once you get into that, you're gonna have uniforms, you're gonna have health, dental, vision, life insurance.
Well, that's the thing though, you don't know how many hours that they're gonna put at the fairground. If you rent it out ten times that month, sure, you're gonna have a lot of hours there. But there might be a month where it gets rented out once and there's not the need.
You could have, you could, when you do the interlocal agreement, you could have some sort of minimum in the interlocal agreement that the Fair Board will reimburse the county back for having this employee available.
Because I think, you know, you're gonna have to have that person, I think that person needs to be responsible, go over and check it every day to make sure a pipe hasn't busted and there's water running or someone hasn't been in there vandalizing. So I think you need to dedicate every, so much time every day.
So I think the way to expedite this is for our board to nominate someone to negotiate the interlocal agreement. And then the Fair Board will also need to put somebody, nominate one of their Fair Board members to negotiate the interlocal agreement. Then me and you and them will get together and we'll hash out the details of what's gonna be in that interlocal agreement. And then once the interlocal agreement, once we've got all the terms, I'll write it up. And then we'll submit the interlocal agreement here into the Fair Board and then once they sign, then we can go from there. Hire the employee. And then that way, then all the co, we'll, we'll give that employee strength, authority to do the contract. All the payments will have to be made to the Treasurer's Office, that employee's not to take any payments whatsoever. And you'll do it just like you do the road things. And so, once a week, you know, those contracts will come through and you'll just approve them.
After the fact.
After the fact, yeah.
And just so that we're, we see them, that they've been approved.
And that way you, you've got oversight over that employee and then make sure that, you know, that way, because it'd be easy for that person to, you know, rent the building to somebody, pocket the change and nobody knows what's going on. So we've gotta have some oversight over that employee.
So that employee can, can get the contract signed but cannot accept the payment.
Correct.
Can someone else at the District Three shop accept the payment?
Um, that probably would be acceptable, but, you know, you've gotta have enough separation there so that, you know, you've got adequate controls. You've just gotta have oversight because you don't wanna have that, even have that temptation to that employee to pay money.
Right, right. But I mean, in, in, instead of that, the, the party, you know, Joe Smith happened to drive all the way to Metro. You know, they've looked at the building, now they're ready to sign, sign the contract and they say, oh, by the way, you gotta drive to Metro with the payment. You know, it might be more convenient for him to go across the street and pay it to your E A.
That's, that's fine as long as it's not on Friday.
Right.
Or Saturday.
Right, yeah, or so, yeah, well, that would be a whole different deal. That would have to be, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's not, I mean, you know, uh, that employee, since, um, he sees your employee, um, she just works. You know, just does the contract negotiations, you know, Monday through Thursday. If there's an event, she, you know.
Well, that, no, that employee for the fairground, if it's an event on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, that employee has to work to follow. That's why we're having an employee.
Right.
That when they walk out the door at midnight and lock it up.
I'm just talking about taking the payment. That person can't take the payment.
But the person, the, the, the County Fair Board person, or the Expo Center employee is going to be expected to work nights.
Sure, sure.
And that's, that's what the job is.
Correct.
Sure.
But again, you get into that overtime deal, you know, you're gonna have.
That's why you need to, that's why you need to negotiate the overtime and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't think the over, I, I have a, I think it's doable, Pat, but I think it's gonna be a.
It's more than what I wanted to choose.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know that you wanna, I, no, you have a choice. You can hire.
I'm not gonna sit, I'm not gonna allow that building to sit there empty.
No.
And neither should the roof.
No.
Anybody else in this room.
But you don't have to fill, you don't have to fill, if you hire somebody for twenty hours a week, doesn't mean you have to, Grant County District Three has to hire that same person for twenty hours to give them a forty hour week. You don't have to, we can hire one person that that's all they do and you don't have to share that employee. That's what I'm saying. Because this person's gonna be working evenings and nights, not to your schedule.
That, that also, that also goes to whether that's an exempt position according to.
I don't think it'd be, I, I think they're gonna be hourly. I think they're gonna be hourly.
If they're hourly, then you need to, you're gonna have to negotiate overtime.
It just might, it might be easier to hire one that's, that's full-time as opposed to with the benefits as a part of the part-time.
Absolutely, you will get a better, a better employee. If they know they have a job and they're getting a weekly check and they're getting benefits paid.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, my biggest question is, we talked about this at the Fair Board meeting, is the rate. And you said that you couldn't hire anybody for less than like fifteen dollars an hour and we don't wanna pay more than ten. So if we have our hours at ten and you have yours at fifteen, how does that work?
But this person isn't gonna be an equipment operator either.
Okay, all right. Well, that was just all I'm seeing, is that conflict of how would you handle two different rates?
That's, that would be part of the negotiations in this interlocal agreement as to how much you guys are gonna pay.
And, and what the thing is, is like you wanna pay ten dollars and all of a sudden you need someone, you got a big event and they're gonna work twenty hours and he's already worked them thirty, then you're the overtime person and you don't wanna do that.
And that's, you know, and that's also gonna go towards how much you charge to rent the facility. So, um, you know, if you end up having to pay this person more, you, you know, the.
Are the rates gonna cover their?
Yeah, the facility rates may need to go up to cover this, this employee.
I agree. So, okay. Well, and I know we had talked also about, you know, the idea that we wanted to try to keep them at eighteen hours or less to try to prevent having to pay benefits. And if you go with a full-time employee, we're gonna end up sharing benefits. And so that's something that, you know, but there, if you're talking about having, where we all hash it out together, then.
I think that's, I think that's the only, I think that's the only way to make this work is, you know, each board appoint somebody to negotiate the contract for them.
Okay.
Um, and then we all get together in a room and chalkboard and hash it, hash it out as to what the basic terms are. Then I'll draft up a basic agreement. You guys will then start reading the agreement and marking things up in the agreement until everybody, you know, is happy with it.
Okay. That sounds like a plan.
Okay, at this point, we need a motion to appoint someone from our board to represent this board in working as the Fair Board.
Before we get that, to that point, the only issue I have is having somebody in District Three be in charge of bringing the money up here. I don't know how I.
I, you know, what if, what about the idea of having, you know, envelopes down there? Where they're just, it's like, we see them write out a check and it goes in an envelope that's signed and, and ready to go to the mail.
Well, that's, you know.
I mean, it's like they mail, we have them mail that payment that day.
That, that, that can be part of the, the negotiations in the agreement. We can, at that point in time.
That way, nobody has to travel, but the payments get made.
Right, right.
Because then you're looking at postal fraud if something, you know, gets messed up too. So, I mean.
That's a good point.
So you say you provide them stamped envelopes too?
Right, you know, we, if we need to increase the, I mean, I don't think we'd have to, but I mean, it's just part of our cost. As we provide a stamped envelope, you write the check that day and we stick it in there and it's signed and.
We'll follow you to the post office and you stick it in.
Yeah, you know, yeah, or something.
Yeah, the less, the less hands that are involved in that, I think the better off we're gonna be.
But that, you know, that's still that person accepting payment and that's not a separation of duties.
Not necessarily.
But we can, we can, we can get with the auditor on, on that and make sure that we have adequate internal controls.
Isn't that how the highway patrolmen do it with tickets? I've been a long time, but I know long, used to years and years ago.
We don't.
They, they follow you to the post office and watch you stick it in the mailbox. Do they not do that anymore?
We don't do that anymore.
Okay.
Uh, at least not here in this county.
Would you, would you mind checking on that? Force, please, as far as I can.
For, for mailing?
Yes.
Uh, ab, absolutely. I think that is, um, you know, we, we can talk, contact the Auditor's Office to make sure we have adequate internal control. And I'd be happy to contact them and see if mailing would be an adequate control.
Yeah, because they wouldn't, I mean, payment then wouldn't be taken by that person. It would be going straight to the Treasurer's Office. So, I mean.
It'd be good to have a receipt book too.
Yeah, and, and, and.
Well, you couldn't receipt it because that, if they received it, that means they've accepted it. So you can't receipt it. It can't be received.
How do you track it then?
Copy.
When it comes, yeah.
Photocopy.
The check?
Yeah, once they receive it, receive it, they, they photocopied it, stick it in the envelope. Um, and then, and then, um, you know, on the contract that the people sign, that's part of the stuff that they sign is that they understand that the payment goes directly in the mail. And then we'll have to have a separate
Yeah.
uh, account on the Treasurer's, in the Treasurer's Office for these events.
Do we have a motion?
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve Pat Ronk as the representative for the Grant County Board Commissioners to work out the details for the Free Fair and the Board's Council members on a part-time employee for the Expo Center.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried unanimously. Of the service agreement for Grant County Expo Center, Colgans of Enid.
Okay, so that was.
Yes, that was. You know, um, this is one where, um, was the, was the water softener and that stuff, is that part of the initial bid? No, this came in after.
It was, okay, I didn't know.
Then, uh, doesn't look like that they followed the purchasing order stuff with this. Um, since the purchasing orders was, wasn't followed with this, I don't know that we necessarily have the power to approve these things. Um, they, um, Cindy Pratt did go ahead and do a contract after the fact. I don't have any problems with this service, um, contract and I'm gonna sign off on it. So, um, you know, you guys can approve the service contract and it goes from here. But I don't know that you guys have the power or authority to approve these past bills. And so the Fair Board is gonna have to.
Take it out of their cash account.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, so the water softener.
Yeah.
And how much are those past bills, Cindy, do you remember?
Well, it was new service.
Yeah.
And so it's like five hundred and some dollars because that's the actual, you sold.
Yeah.
So they'll have to.
And once this gets approved, then the bills can.
I, I move to approve the ser, the service contract between Coligan, Water of Enid and the Grant County Fair Board.
Ron moved to approve the search room for the Grant County Expo Center, uh, and Coligan of Enid and, uh, Hess seconded, all favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess. All ayes motion carried unanimously and, uh, we will not approve the original five hundred and five dollars and eighty-five cents that because it was not followed under the, uh, under the proper bidding procedure. You can send that back to the Fair Board for them to pack their cash account.
Do we say aye?
Okay, Crosland Construction, Grant County Expo Center payment to vendors and free documentation. We've been served that, uh, there's a lien on Grant County Expo buildings.
Yeah, I think someone just needs, probably from the board, needs to reach out to Crosland Construction and find out what's going on, why haven't they been paid.
Who's, who's the vendor?
Stoles, Stoles was one of them.
Stolein.
Stole's Heating and Air Conditioning was one of them, um, Cindy, did you print that out? I don't remember. I can't remember. There was three of them on there.
I know, I know since Christmas, the plumber didn't call me once a month.
Which is tough, right?
He wasn't listed.
No, but I just, it's, it's, there's a pattern.
And so, um.
Yeah, right.
So I think the first step is, uh, someone from the Fair Board, reach out to them, find out why aren't these guys getting paid? What's the problem?
Can, can one of us do it?
Yes.
Okay, I'd really do that.
Yes, and then, um, if, you know, you don't get a satisfactory answer, the next step is for me to write a demand letter, uh, to them, uh, requesting that they pay these people and pay them properly, uh, so that we don't get a lien on the property. And then if they. and pay them properly, uh, so that we don't get a lien on the property. Um, and then if they, if we still don't get satisfaction, then the next step is to sell.
And so while, in the meantime, while they're invoicing us to be paid, do we pay them?
We're, we're.
You, you've got a con-.
We're waiting on things to be done.
Yeah.
Be done, yeah.
You, you, you've got a contract with, um, them, um, for, for payment for these things. And understanding is that you put your current payments on hold since you started getting these things.
Do we have any current ones?
There were, yeah, he had emailed wanting to know about the payment.
March's payment.
Yeah.
And I haven't responded back to him.
This one is, this is, uh, D S, D S Hearn Company out of Tulsa that has, uh, not been paid. And his name is Stole Heating and Air, Oklahoma City Crosland Construction of Oklahoma City. And, and it's for their fans, their movers, their dampers, their curbing, their grills, their, have their equipment and heaters and et cetera that they have not been paid for.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather, I'd much rather.
We should have that in the email, just send that to Sol.
I'd much rather somebody from the board call them first than me call them because as soon as an attorney calls somebody, sometimes the, everything goes, goes south from there.
Alright, so, um.
Can, can, would you be able to bring over there and find out what the, what the purchaser is that, that we haven't?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and on that.
Oh, they're working in the sys- I don't know, they're upgrading our system.
Well, can we just, um, can we appoint Pat to, to try to get this settled for all behalf of the board?
Yeah, I think that's the, that's, that's right.
Okay. Hi, can you just find out, um, how much the fee is for Crosland Construction?
I make a motion to appoint Pat to find out from Crosland why these vendors aren't getting paid and report back.
Second.
I want to second that one either.
I don't want her to catch up.
Yeah, I, I, I am anxious to see what, what's been in the voice so far.
Do you have my number? Could you let me know after you call? Talk to them. Thank you.
Um, okay. Hess moved, seconded to, uh, appoint Pat.
Again?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Ron, as a representative for the Grant County Board of County Commissioners to inquire on Croslands is to payment to vendors and the pre-lead documentation, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
We have.
Twenty-two thousand thirty-five. They're not majorly huge, twenty-two thousand seven hundred five.
We could go ahead, we could go ahead and pay that. I mean, cause we still owe them like a hundred thousand bucks.
Well, why don't you work that out? We don't, we're not gonna do it today. That's what you're appointed to do, figure it out. Okay, item S, Holly Fire Department shell purchase from Dale's Construction, P O thirty-three ninety-nine, invoice ninety-two sixty-five. And that was another, this is another one that didn't go out for the proper bid procedure.
So, again, um, you know, they, uh, didn't get a P O and this was, uh, after the fact. So, I don't think you guys have authority to approve this. Is that, is that correct?
That's right.
Is that correct? So.
They didn't follow the, follow the purchasing procedures.
Um. So, I think you, you know, you send this back to Holly and you tell Holly that, that they gotta pay this out of their municipal account or whatever. They've gotta figure out how to pay it.
Cause it had to be bid, cause it was over five thousand bucks.
Yes, yeah. So, I, I don't think you have the authority to prove it. Um, so, I, I think all you can do at this point is de- decline it and, um, put it back on Holly and, and tell them, you know, they've gotta fix it.
Do we need that a motion? Do we need that, or is that a motion?
Yeah, I think you need, you, you, you need to.
I move to decline payment of, uh, for shell, uh, from Dale's Construction for Holly Fire Department.
And state for the reason.
Because proper purchasing procedure was not, was not followed with the County Purchasing Act. Check it.
Ron moved, has seconded to decline payment of purchase order thirty-three ninety-nine to Dale's Construction for Holly Fire Department because the Purchasing Procedure Act was not properly followed, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, to be paid out of their cash account. Let's see, can we let you out so easy? I don't know.
This has been kind of a rough Monday.
Let me know.
Including Pat. God, love.
Is there anything?
We're taking off at noon today, aren't we?
Just get, 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 get with me and the Fair Board as to a time. Mondays and Tuesdays are horrible for me, but I can do any other day of the week.
Mondays aren't good for me either, so, okay, we'll, we'll figure out something.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank.
Item B, ABLE Q and A meeting as reported by Commissioner Ronk. You're on, you're on again.
Wow, um, there is really absolutely nothing to report. Th- this was, this was all for liquor stores, bar owners. It was, the, the biggest thing I got out of that was, uh, if, if this, that, uh, if, if we approve, well, not even that, that starting October one, or, is it November one or October?
October one.
October one. Liquor stores can be open at ten o'clock on Sundays. That was the biggest thing I got out of that. And that guy with ABLE Commission said, well, you guys, as a county, should've gone out for a vote on that if you want it in place by then. And we said, well, the DA said we couldn't.
Well, we're, we're going out for liquor by the drinker and down to the old statute. He says we can't do anything because the new statute doesn't go effect till October first and then you have to do it.
He, well, and he said, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, but he said, I, I know other counties are doing it, so.
Well, I think we're, we're, this is a Mike Fields deal actually. He's, and Mike Fields can be talked to all his counties.
Okay, that's, that's fine, so.
So, we won't be, it won't be just Grant County.
Well, then, there is absolutely nothing to report there.
Okay. Alrighty, stay tuned. Uh, zoning questionnaire from, uh, Vercom on.
Yeah, Cindy sent me a copy of that and basically they're just wanting to know whether we have any zoning.
Oh, we have to do the standard.
Oh, is this, do we do this every year? Or is this different companies?
We have a, we have a standard.
That's a different one. That's different than the standard one.
We, we have a standard one from our Board of County Commissioners that have DESI type up i- if they're wanting to know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just have a standard letter because we're not gonna fill out their form because it's gonna be our standard letter.
Okay.
That says that at this time and date, we don't, but always if you're gonna build something in the future, always check.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this one we don't want.
So, does it have to come through the board or, okay, so, you want me to back on?
Yes, it does. Put it back on, yes, put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, item X, Monument for Deceased Indigenous Citizens of Grant County. Yay, I finally got something done on that. So, went to, uh, in Alba when I was over at the C E D meeting, I start, stopped in at the Alba Monument Works there on the corner and spoke with Cindy, where's that? I had some.
Oh, I copied it.
Oh, on the, oh, well, the card's over there. I can have. On the back, I'm sorry, on the back of it, I have.
Yeah, I have it over there. Let me go get it or let me have the girls.
Okay. Oh, what it comes down to is this stone at the top, you see that says Scott, it wouldn't have the base or the flowers. We're talking about just doing a height, granite, it would be five feet tall, six inches thick. It'd have a straight top and it would be made where these could be mounted.
Oh, that.
And what the deal is, um.
How do they mount those? That's pretty heavy.
On the back, they have screws they put in them and they, they mount them on there and they would mount them. Those costs, he would sell those to us at cost and they're a hundred and, today, they're a hundred ninety-four a piece. But we could put anything you want, there's no, we could put in memory of the deceased name, like the day they were born and the day they died. And we put them on. I think we have five right now. And he's gonna work with the owner and see if the owner wouldn't actually donate the monument. The monument's about seventeen hundred dollars retail. If we would allow them to put on the back, donated by and their company. And then we would have to pay to have them come set it. And he thought that might be like three hundred dollars. And then these would be a hundred ninety-four a piece and then a little, and then they'd charge us to mount them, but it would be something permanent. You'd never have to paint it.
Really, this would, this'll look nicer than what I had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how that'd do it.
Um, um, but, you know, and he said if, if the owner would not donate the stone, he thought he, we could get this stone. He said they usually sell them from anywhere from seventeen hundred, it would be in, in just gray, plain gray. It would be anywhere from seventeen to two thousand is what they sell them for, but he said it cannot be, they don't want to donate. It might cost about five hundred dollars. Yeah.
That's what happens, doesn't it?
Five foot tall, thirty inches wide. It would be set with dowel holes on it. It would be a gray color, straight top. It's what they call a six inch stick and his name is Buddy. So, um.
Well, that's.
I, uh, I, he said you could get about seventy-five of those on that.
Yeah, that's a lifetime.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought.
I'm gonna tell you guys something too. Worry about. Buddy owned this monument.
Right, he did. Right, he just sold it.
When they vandalized Manchester Cemetery right there, south of Manchester and everybody, they went in there and tipped a bunch of stones over and broke some old, old stones. He come over for a charge, reset them stones, repaired the ones that he could, put them back and did the charge to Cemetery Association of Dying.
That's pretty good.
I thought that was excellent, that he did.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a great idea.
I do too.
You want us to move forward?
No, absolutely, absolutely. I, the only concerns I have is, is this poor family going without one right now while you've got it?
Uh, this was a misspell.
Oh.
It's supposed to be utter back and it's olo back. So, yeah, this was just an extra one, so, but those are really, really nice. And, I mean, permanent, you'll never have to paint it. You'll never have to do anything. It'll be there. And we will need to get the information of all the people that we need to have these made for, uh, make sure we get our spelling and our dates.
Birth dates, spelling.
Yeah, spelling. You know, if they don't have, maybe, uh, even if they don't have a month and a day, you know, maybe a year or something. And we'll just do, go from there, so.
Well, I move to, uh, appoint Commissioner Bobbit to. Represent the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, Ron moved, has seconded to appoint Cindy Bobbit to take care of the details for the Monument for the Deceased Indigenous Citizens of Grant County, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
See, it goes both ways.
Cindy, I'm gonna give you this back and I will get that back from.
Okay, and I'll make sure I copy it, whatever that.
Yeah, yes, okay. Alrighty, uh, item Y, Water Fountain on Main Four of Courthouse, options for removal or replacement, currently out of order.
Do you want Scott or do you want me just?
You could just tell us.
Well, he did some checking and to replace the water fountain, I think it was gonna be like six hundred, five or six hundred dollars. Um, I think Scott checked on, uh, do we even wanna have a water fountain to, you know, most offices have water in there or bottled water or have the Coligan thing in their office, so, you know.
Yeah, Scott explained to me that it's not working. They don't know whether the problem is actually the water fountain itself or it's a plumbing or if it's a combination of both. He thinks it's a combination of both. The water fountain's not working and he thinks there's probably something wrong with the line.
That could run into hundreds of dollars.
Yeah, that's, and he said the only day that it's really used is the day that they're in court. And he said it's usually kids playing in it and splashing it. Dina, I talked to Dina. Dina said that's why they got rid of theirs on their floor because kids would just do nothing but play with it and splash water everywhere. Uh, Dina also says that they have their Coligan water deal there, that they, they give water to anybody that asks for it. She said if we wanted to replace it with one of those Coligans, she would, uh, if we wanted to buy the equipment, she would buy the water, help buy the water. But like she said, most people that come to the courtroom have bottled water, she says, really, at this point in time, she wasn't sure that we even needed it.
Why don't we not do anything until it becomes an issue?
Okay, let's not, not, what we need to do though is remove it.
Remove, yeah.
Have him remove it and cap it at this point and then we can just tell him to cap it.
And they just solder that line shut maybe or something like that?
Yes, have him cap it or whatever he needs to do.
I make a motion that we remove the water fountain and cap it.
I second that.
Hess moved, Ron seconded to remove the water fountain on the main floor of the courthouse and cap it, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. I said Hess moved and Ron seconded, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, destruction of audited reports for Grant County in accordance with the Oklahoma Statute Title Nineteen, record retention.
Okay, I have some things I'm, do you have time? I'll go have Jenna come in. Hello, can you have Jenna come in to talk about destruction? Okay.
I wonder what would happen if you feed them into a.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Through a chipper.
Oh, she, she checked on that, so.
Did she?
Jenna can tell you all about it. She really did check about putting it through a wood chipper.
She searched all options, very good.
What's the current status of the burn ban? How did, I can't remember how that worked.
The governor put the burn ban on and we was included in her burn ban. I have not seen, have been on the website to see whether it's been lifted or not.
Okay, so it's a statewide at this point?
No, not, not all were with it.
Or, I mean, state. But state issued, I guess I should say.
Yeah, the gu- the governor put the burn ban on and it superseded our burn ban.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
When is our burn ban?
Yeah, I noticed it wasn't on the agenda and that's what I couldn't remember.
It also actually, this right here is about a wood chipper too.
Okay.
Okay.
Wood chip, wood chip, you wood chip.
That's what I was thinking about.
I can't remember. It's wood tip, tipper and tip.
I can't remember.
With wood chip.
Alright.
Okay, so, um, I had talked to Cheryl Wilson a couple times over email about, um, like the destruction of records. Pretty much most things can go after five years unless it's more, which I think, did you give them?
Yes, I gave them.
The copies.
The, oh, the statute stuffs.
Yes, so.
Oh, is that all the cop?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I really wanted to do a water review here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I might find it redundant.
Okay.
But anyway, uh, as you know, with the fourth floor, there's like, it's tons, yes, tons and tons. And with them, you know, uh, with them doing work up there, they're wanting to kind of like have us clear it out somewhat. So, I think every office kind of needs to do some form of cleanup. Uh, I don't know what way you wanna go about it. It's really up to you. There's different ways we could go about it. Either like burning or a wood chipper or a shredding company. I don't know which. I kind of have some pros and cons there if you wanna look.
Just because it's gonna be really expensive to use a shredding company?
Yes. So, the wood chips, explain the wood chipper to us because I've got a new one coming.
Yes, okay, so depending upon like what size it is, um, you can put like the smaller wood chippers. You can put at least an inch and a half of the papers in there at a time, so that's kind of gonna require some, yeah, exactly, constant feeding. I don't know.
And is it gonna blow all over everywhere?
Well, you'd have to blow it in the truck. See, like, mine, mine has a deal where you blow it into my, you can blow it into my truck. We, obviously out in the country, you.
Yeah.
Put it elsewhere, but you can blow it in.
Well, you can even do it like in a shop. They were showing, uh, the videos that I watched. Uh, it is kind of like, you definitely don't wanna do it in the wind.
Yeah, it's gonna go everywhere.
You know, but, uh, I would say if you were to like even kind of put a box up near it, you could just kind of like shred all that. Uh, I don't exactly know. It's definitely gonna be time consuming just because we have so much, like even our office, like Alex and I had one upstairs and took down. We had approximately like ninety boxes to start with of things that could just go.
Okay, my question is, do we, surely we have some county-owned property somewhere where we could dig a hole and, once the burn ban's lifted and.
Well, we have a FEMA-approved burn site with Cindy Bobbit.
I have a FEMA-approved burn site up here on the edge of Metford, you know, you gotta have the winds right since, uh, Gonzales built his house right there. We used to always catch a south wind, but now if he's on the north, we gotta catch a, uh, a different wind and that's gonna be a little trickier. But, yeah, we thought what we're, till we decide, what we're doing is we've already taken initiative. They've already gone, started going through their documents. We've got forty boxes right now that we know that, that has to be dealt with. Some of it can go in a general dumpster.
Yes.
It has nothing.
Yeah, no personal information, you know, um, like what Cheryl Wilson had said here, uh, protecting personal information, anything with private information must be destroyed, shredded or burned to prevent it from being used properly. Yeah, destruction of records. anything with private information must be destroyed, shredded or burned to prevent it from being used properly, yeah, destruction of records.
Oh, gotcha.
So what we were doing is, we've got some wooden pallets and tomorrow, seven-ten, we're gonna try to get some inmates and we're gonna start taking those boxes out, putting them on pallets and we're gonna shrink wrap them and seal them and then we're gonna storm in our, our old shed, but by shrink wrapping them on pallets, they know that nobody can go in there and start going through them, they'll be shrunk wrapped and contained and sealed that way. And then once we decide whether we're gonna run them through a wood chipper or if we're gonna throw them in our pit and burn them or if we're gonna hire a deal, we can at least get everything out of the attic and if we have everything and decide to chip them or shred them, hire a shredder at one time, it would be cheaper if you had them come one whole day and sit there and shred all day long than to have them come and do forty boxes this week and then next week do another forty boxes. So we're gonna store them at my district shop till we can get that done. So what you're needing from us, Jenna, is kind of giving us some outlines of what we need to do with this after we get them all.
Exactly, so it's really just kind of your decision how you wanna dispose of it.
Well, I think since you've got decided that you're gonna put them on pallets and store them over there, let's go ahead and keep doing that so we can.
Get that cleaned out.
Yeah, clean that out.
Do you have sufficient room?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We will, we're gonna stack them in.
So if, like I send out an email or something and tell everyone and then anything you need to, if they'll box it up, then we'll get it, uh, taken over to district, and it'll shrink wrap and tell us to find it.
What I'm planning on doing, like, to me, what I'm planning on doing is when we come tomorrow morning, we're gonna be here about, we'll come up about seven or seven-ten and we're gonna have the pallets here, we're gonna stack the inmates, Jeremy's gonna see if he can get the inmates to come over and help and we're gonna stack them directly on the pallets right there and sh- and wrap them right there and then we're gonna move them that way. They're gonna be done right then and there.
Yeah.
And then we'll move them and store them in our, our shed, um, so, so we got a little time exactly to decide it, but I agree, what we need to do is direct Cindy to get ahold of every office, we've got to get that attic emptied.
Exactly.
We've got to do something with that attic, because we're getting ready to start on all of that, we need it out. Need to make sure everybody knows it's five years, one of the items on here is, um.
The highway stuff.
The highway, yeah, we need to decide on our stuff, the destruction of our, and audited, we have, last audit was, well, we're within the five years, right, so anything that's.
Yeah, it's my understanding, yeah.
So when we speak five years, since this year isn't finished, this year doesn't count, so it's gotta be five years from, from the, for that, so we're talking anything after bef- physical year twelve and back, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm, exactly.
Physical year twenty-twelve and back, so we do not wanna dis- there are certain things you can never destroy, right? Jenna, there's some records that you can never destroy?
Yeah, I mean, uh, record retention doesn't exactly tell you, from what I've read, what exactly you can't destroy it all, but it would be like for us, I know land records, we can never destroy that, or, um.
As it can, bridge records, we can never destroy.
You know.
Yeah, right, right.
Payroll, like stuff like that, you know, as, as far as that sort of information, but if, if it's like financial stuff, uh, like.
Probably can't ever get rid of, get rid of anything.
Like warrants.
I wouldn't.
Well, and, and like even like some of these, like the inter-locals and all that, say five years, even though we had, I scanned them in and saved them.
Well, surely just like.
Electronic, so the things that we thought, even though it says you can get rid of, if it's something we feel like it's, that we'll have to read.
That right there.
And back, but I'm scanning that stuff in.
That is the statutes right there.
Oh, okay.
It tells you all through there, um.
Summer seven, like that assessor's.
And I even underlined, um, I think it's the next page.
Yeah, data reports including.
Yes. Yes, the daily jackets and the purchase orders, which was a big deal for our office, there's a lot of that upstairs.
Purchase orders. I was just looking through the first two assessor and clerk's office and I was looking through where it said treasurer's office.
And actually, the fact, hey, for Cindy Bobbitt's reading is much easier.
This is a really good one, like the assessors, it says seven years, what you have.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of a.
County treasurer, there's some seven and some ten. And, uh, the clerk's office, uh, one, five, seven and ten, and county clerk, yeah, two, five, six, so, I think this document, Cindy.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send them in, I'll send them after everyone.
Alright, so with that, um.
Just like the notebooks of, of what people did on what day of May twenty-first of two thousand thirteen.
Well.
Well, or, okay, say two thousand eleven, just get that going.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, so in your district offices, you can do the same thing and you can either, if you wanna put them on pallets and shrink wrap them and bring them to me, or if you wanna bring the, I, I just, I can get just, I've got pallets personally, I've got pallets.
If you've got anything that you've got federal funds that you've got reimbursed for, you wanna keep them records.
Right, sure.
Because it can come back and help you.
FEMA.
Right, right.
And, and on roads, they do recommend that if you do go through a FEMA disaster and you showed that you rocked that road ten years ago, you need those kinds of records.
Yeah.
So some of those is, is your, at your district, anything on our bridges here we need to keep.
I think if we do something, I think we'll wait until the time that it's actually being done before.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not hurting anything in our district offices.
I do have a question, uh, upstairs on the fourth floor. We have, um, big filing cabinets and it has to do with, um, all the highway purchase orders, is that something that you guys wanna go ahead and, uh, like have us go through, 'cause I mean, we can close it up and.
That stuff certainly predates me.
As long as it's a, then they, you know.
I, I think that's, the, any purchase orders that is.
Two thousand and twelve or something.
Yeah, I think we can destroy those.
Okay.
If you find anything that says a bridge file on it, just destroy that.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah.
How many, how many filing cabinets are you talking, Jenna?
Like three or four, huge filing cabinet.
Cause you're gonna need a home for those filing cabinets in too, right?
I think.
I don't get them.
Well.
Well, I think, I mean, if we do that, I think we'll probably recycle the filing cabinets because as we.
Yeah.
We have to keep some of them, you know, we'll need some, but they're, they're easier to find, anything in a filing cabinet than a box. We'd rather keep the filing cabinets.
Right, right.
Yeah, we kind of need the filing cabinets up there.
Well, I thought that whole attic needed to be cleared out for them to do.
Well, I, we probably do need to maybe clear that out for them while they're, because they're gonna have to stabilize, we can put a lot of that stuff in my shed.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
I've got a Deer Creek, I've got a Deer Creek shed, but we can maybe ask the sheriff's department about using them to help us load and get them to move it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, s- alright, so, uh, it's a consensus, the, do we probably, that is a line item on here. One, do we, let's see, item Z is destruction and audited records for Grant County, um, let's make a motion to, uh, follow that statute and notify all offices to, to do that.
Uh, it's moved, so moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Ron mo- motion has seconded to approve the destruction of audited records for Grant County in accordance with the Oklahoma Statute Title Nineteen on record retention and that the county clerk notify all offices of such and that they can be, uh, handled through, uh, pallets of storage until how to destroy them will be notified.
Okay.
All in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried unanimously, A, a destruction of audited highway purchase orders older than five years, uh, by the county clerk's office graciously dominating their time to cur- destroy our.
I make a motion that we approve them to go through the record, purchase orders, audited purchase orders for fi- that are five years or older.
I second.
And issue away.
Hess moved, Ron seconded to allow our audited highway purchase orders that have been audited five years and older to be destroyed by the county clerk's office and thank you very much for that.
Thank you, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Do we go, do we go from, from the last?
Bobbitt.
Audit?
Well.
Last audit year?
Yeah, uh, anything five years, no, I think we just, anything fi- if it's been audited.
I, I've been older than two thousand and twelve, we make sure it's been through an audit.
Yeah, because we've been audited since twelve.
Okay, Hess, do you?
Aye.
Uh, all ayes, motion carried unanimously. Item B, the Jan, Jan full contract for Grant County Health Department and Marla Flann, contract labor, May one through twenty eighteen and to June thirty of twenty eighteen.
Okay, I, they sent me the contract and I didn't find out till later Friday that they haven't really hired Marla, but if you wanna look, so anyway, the DA looked over the contract, so I don't know that Marla's going to be, so, is gonna actually be the contractor.
Well, then why, do we wanna sign that then?
Okay. Well. No, but I just thought, I.
Why don't we re-submit it and leave the name blank?
Yeah, and then.
And then we can say whenever they hire someone on.
Then it's already approved then, okay.
So that would be item, uh, B B N C C is to wait, okay, so it's good, no action. Uh, B D, uh, boundary and annex survey, Department of Commerce, U S Census Bureau, don't come in, that's the same thing we've had.
I don't know, Desi, Desi, I didn't even really look at it, she brought that up.
Okay, this is the one where we've received this letter before, I thought we answered it, where Alphafa Camp, no, Woods County, um.
Oh, yeah, where they answered it, nine-one-one answered that first.
Yes, is that, is that not, read that max, because they're gonna do that GSI for us, is that it?
Yeah, I think so.
So I thought Woods might have flipped that out, but we probably need to sign it or not? Sign it again?
I, well, we can sign it.
I think we're coming up.
I, yeah, see, I thought that they, they were taking care of that, they, they took care of that for us.
That's on the wall.
Already.
Thank you, bye-bye. So, so that letter is asking to just confirm that, is that, read that now?
Okay.
Our government does not have boundary changes.
Yeah, we don't have boundary changes, but.
Not till twenty, you know, twenty twenty will be revised.
Right, right, we. It, and we, somebody's marked this, we will download the graphic.
I think I told Desi that that's what we were planning on doing because of the Woods County doing that.
Okay, we will download the deal and use the, download the shaking files only, okay. I just would mark this up here, we do not have, uh, does not have boundary changes to report.
Okay.
And send it back in, sign it.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
Mail to the highest elected official, contact information printed below and you're, you're the chair and it's got your name on there, so I guess we'll let you say.
So, are we approving this?
Yes, I make a motion to approve it.
Alright, second.
Alright, Hess, Hess moved, Ron seconded to send the boundary and annex survey for twenty eighteen back that says our document does not have any boundary, so we're going to mark that one off.
Okay, here's the other paperwork that goes with that.
All in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried unanimously.
There's that, uh, paper clip there, Cindy. Cindy, if you don't mind making.
It's not bad, I just, if I go whole line and start canning and I'm not sure I'm gonna do that either.
Take it with me, I might go over there and make, verify with.
Okay.
Max, what are road crossing permits? I see it on your agenda, what are they?
Whenever the oil field come in and stuff, we have a permit form that they fill out that shows whether they're gonna cross a road or run down along it with their line, what kind of line it is.
Okay.
I wanna go look at this, I don't want.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I'd say I can.
We've been trying to kind of generalize.
I just wanna go look at it.
Over the state, uh, Kingfisher County is getting hit with all the oil traffic now and they're bringing forth their permit, they just redid. They have a lot of things that they have that the landlord needs to sign.
Really?
Besides the.
Hmm.
What we signed, you know, so, yeah, it, it's a good deal, uh. It makes them responsible that they've talked to the landlord and the landlord agrees with it. A lot of times, the county, just as soon as they put the line out on the landlord, has to come down with the ditch and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I know they did ours, I think they went right through our quarter, so.
And did they pay the landlord?
Yes, they can. That's why some landlords, right, because the county was getting money, but that was out in the, the right of way and some of the companies, what the deal is, is they got to be in upset because the landlord wouldn't give permission and they come to the county and we would give them permission to run that line, so, it's both ways.
Okay.
April thirtieth, huh?
That's up to do.
Alright, we have one comment here from Kay Electric over in my area. I've been in contact with Chad Shepherd, the guy that staked it, there is one anchor that is about three inches off of my roadway surface.
Ouch.
That has to be moved and I told him, uh, the rest of the line is, he's got about four miles that is being upgraded to three phases and they've agreed to move that anchor and that is part of this, um, permit. So it is approved subject to that anchor being moved for safety issues, I didn't make that motion to.
I'll second that.
Bobbitt moved, has seconded to approve the K Electric permit, twenty eighteen, number four thirty-four, subject to the moving of an anchor that is in the road, all in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried unanimously.
Is that it?
And you think yours?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna go look at mine.
And the other one, no action on the, uh, the other one. New business, Cindy, so do you have any new business?
Yes, um, I got this email after the agenda had been posted from Jim Hamlin, um, and just, my reading needs to schedule a monthly owner meeting, um.
The meeting will bring up the owner today on the construction activities, um, that you can meet with the construction manager, the owner and the architect representatives, uh, it doesn't really, if you have one person, it doesn't have to be in an open meeting, it's just kind of a public meeting, just to kind of bring you up to date, if we'd like to, to have someone do that monthly, monthly, uh, do that. Do, do you go there and put our board of meetings, uh, on a Monday and update us or do you want them to meet with Scott or to Cindy or?
I, I, I was thinking that Scott, I mean, cause he's here every day anyway. I, I think that would fall under, that would be a good deal for him or for us.
So you want me to go and take notes so I can refer things back to you all?
That would be good.
That'd be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think what, uh, uh, a point, or, or I think, I don't even know that we have to point, I think we can just have a consensus that we agree that I think Cindy and Scott represent us and, and go to the first one, Cindy, if you think it's something that some would interest to be at.
That's probably where if it could be, if it could be like a set two o'clock every, the, the first Tuesday of the month.
I think that's what he's saying, that's what he's saying.
That's what he wants to do.
In here, that, that way, if any one of the three of us wants to be here, we can.
He wants to come, yeah, so tell me what day works best for you if, on a set ti- a set day.
I, I think that would. I think Mondays are out for all of us.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know what.
When things aren't good, is that?
CDs, I had like a Tuesday morning at, I don't know, like nine?
Yeah.
A Tuesday morning, or whatever the, what do they say, the first, they said the first, the scheduling, uh, yeah, the first, just figure out, send you like a Tuesday, certain, the first Tuesday, second Tuesday.
Make it fit you too, if you don't either have it.
Yeah, make it like a first Tuesday or second Tuesday of every month and see how that works, you attend the last one, whether you think it's something that one of us.
That you all need to go or if it's something I can relate, here, let's have a coffee if you, if you want.
Oh, thank you, okay, got it, okay, yeah. Set, set that up.
Okay.
Make it, make it fit your schedule.
Schedule and we'll go from there. Any other new business?
No.
Uh, do you have any new business?
I don't have any.
That, you have any?
I have none.
I have none, um.
Bring us down to executive session for title twenty-five, almost, number seventy-three, seven.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
Um, Hess moved, Ron seconded to enter executive session and, uh, any?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
All ayes motion carried unanimously, yes.
Put us in executive session.
You close the door?
No, you, I, I'll be leaving, I just, I'm looking at the screen, I'm really not looking at.
Okay.
I move that we re-enter open session.
I'll second that.
At eleven forty-four.
Ron moved, has seconded to re-enter open session at eleven forty-four. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Tess?
Aye.
Oh, as motion carried. Item eleven, no action. Item twelve, Mr. Max, what do you have going on?
Uh, okay. You know what? It rained about an inch and two, inch one, inch to inch two over my area. I know that there's probably people that have more than that, but anyway, that's my rain gauge totals. Uh, we are working on, uh, finishing the last bridge in the shop. And we are started the bridge up west of Given Elevator. Uh, we're gonna put two bridges in there. And we're started on the first one, got it tore out, and they're gonna start on it. And really, I don't have, I'm going to Oklahoma City Wednesday to the statewide meeting, CD meeting, and, uh, they're gonna have a legislative meeting, I believe, too, that day.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. I'm gonna leave early enough, I hope, can get down there and go to that. Uh, then go to the board meeting in the afternoon. Then, I'm going to run over to Tulsa.
Why don't you drive?
I think I'll, I think I'll drive. I'll get there a lot faster, I know that. I'm gonna go over by To- Tulsa and look at a, a, uh, a Packer. Another Packer that they have over there.
Take pictures.
I will. I can take pictures. My Packer's in pretty good shape, but I'm having trouble, um, with the wiring harness on it.
My guys like your P- Packer.
Do they?
Yes, very much so.
Oh, good.
You know, they liked it better than that new cat that Bushnell rented.
Oh, really?
That's interesting. That's good to know.
It is good.
That's good to know.
Well, my, my Smoothdrum, my old Dyna Pack is the one that I'm having, uh...
Oh, okay, not the Sheep's Foot.
The Sheep, yeah, the Sheep's Foot I'm having, but that John Deere come up and they're putting a new wiring harness on it. Oh. The other is, it's, it's gonna need tires, and it's gonna need a few things, and I may do something with it. Uh... That is all I have. Oh, there's a, a car, uh, show at Manchester Saturday. It is twenty-eighth.
Yeah, it would be twenty-eighth.
Yeah. There's gonna be a, a car and motorcycle show the twenty-eighth at Manchester. I did not attend the holy fish fry, I don't know, you don't need to put that in there, but anybody missed it, ain't giving it. That's all I have.
Well, uh, we got rained too. I'm not gonna... And I'm, I'm, we're just gonna be work, continuing on working on roads, how's that? And, uh, sounds like I'm gonna be getting with a fair board member and the ADA, that'll keep it busy.
Thank you for volunteering, Max. We appreciate that.
Oh, you're so welcome. If, if I'm, and I don't know if you need to put this in the notes, but Max talking about going to the city, and you're going as well. Um, if I'm fortunate enough to get re-elected, I would like to, uh, and I would like to throw my name in the hat for the six F board, that kinda interests me a little bit.
Do you want that in or not, or not? Okay.
With Brad Raven going off, 'cause he's not running for reelection. And I, I really think, you know, we talked about that, how, uh, we voted no on those bylaws last year. But he has assured me that it's gonna be somebody from this, this district, this Zacco district.
Yeah, he's off, we have to have someone from, or it has to be...
Well, it doesn't say... Well, it didn't say so in the bylaws, remember, 'cause we voted no last year, but he assured me that that would happen, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So, anyway, but, uh, yeah, that's all I got.
Uh, we had anywhere from one point eight to two point seven inches across our district, so we're pretty wet working in the shop today, um, not being able to get out and do too much on the roads, but, uh, we, doing repairs and things like that. Um, as we remember, it is National County Government Month and our activity books came in, uh, my county works a activity book. Um, I will be taking these around to, uh, the schools here in Grant County, to the third and fourth graders. Uh, taken to Minford and Deer Creek Willmont tomorrow and I'll go Concrete Hunter on Thursday, or Patton, would you like to go?
I'm in that, go ahead.
Meeting, so take them there and, uh, Max, if you'd like to.
I have noted meeting Thursday and Wednesday is.
Yeah, so, anyway, I'll be taking those, it, it doesn't fit exactly with Oklahoma, but it gives them a general idea. Uh, so we'll be taking those to the schools and I'll be speaking to the classes and giving them just a little, some brief information of what county government does here in, in Grant County, Oklahoma. And I also will be attending all the Akco meetings. I'm on the Akco legislative, so that starts at nine, and I'll stay for the rest of those meetings. Thursday, we do have a safety meeting at seven o'clock at my district shop as well, and I have some conference calls that day as well, so it will be another busy week. Um, the JKJ auction sold my pickup, my county pickup, um, twenty-two hundred dollars, I've never seen, I put that in there, but twenty-two hundred dollars is what we received on that, so. That's pretty much all I have, so with that, we are, what's your, what's your, uh, truckers?
I think it was either fifty-two and forty-three or fifty-three and forty-two, one or the other.
I wonder why the difference in prices, weren't they about the same?
A loader.
Oh, one had a loader, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, and then the mower brought like nine thousand and four thousand, and then we just had a bunch of other just little knickknack stuff. I wound up buying a, a double combine trailer there that we're gonna, we're gonna just completely revamp it and make a, like a loader trailer.
Oh, yeah. Did, uh, did the third grounds buildings sell?
Yes, got, uh, everything but the cattle barn. And the, and of course the concession stand, it didn't sell anymore.
Yeah.
Um, the, the show ring pins brought, I think it was like a hundred bucks. And the heaters in the show ring brought fifty, I wanna say, and then the show ring, sheep barn, and pig barn brought five hundred dollars. And I was tickled to death that it, they just got a bid on it, 'cause this way they don't have to pay to have it torn down.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
And I think, I think the plan is, uh, when that gets torn down, and I'm gonna remove all the asphalt, 'cause I can use that for riprap. Um, they're wanting to put the, have the tractor pull at the county fair.
Oh, wow.
There, on that spot. They were wanting to do it inside and they, fair board didn't want them.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah, that's probably right, yeah. Okay, with that.
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
Hess move, wrong, second to adjourn at, um, eleven fifty-three. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Oh, I was motioning carrying endlessly.
Thank you.